The bottom of 3,000 and connecting onto Charleston. At this point, I don't see a need where the town would want to sign that document where we don't have anything fixed with regards to positioning at that intersection. So, does the council have any for or against me taking that position?
I'm with you.
I think we ought to keep it on for a couple of months.
On the agenda?
Yeah, I think that we're still talking on the Highway 40 and so we're still working through some issues. If they can enforce those issues, any problem that we have, if they can force that to a resolution, I think we'll pass that if we table it and then we're gonna bring it back though. So, I think if we can just continue that for a couple of months and see if we can bring those issues up.
Okay. If they come up, we'll be able to discuss them further and we'll just continue that item then and I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Everybody else?
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Um, yeah. Okay, and then the underground lot plot adjustment, is that what's on the board?
Yes, and that will actually, I believe they're only doing it right?
Okay, here we do, so I won't talk about it now. Noxious weed changes, is that any more than what we discussed maybe last time?
We had quite a paper that the county has sent out for public notice. I don't know if you guys had a chance to read that in the paper, but they've reclassified a bunch of weeds at state level and so they're Class A, 1B, Class II, Class III, and Class IV is just a prohibited. So, we have quite a bit. This is the one I was telling you about, was it the legislature?
Right.
That they were talking about in implementing with no funding? That's gonna cost us a bunch of money, that's quite a list of weeds, I mean, you look at that.
Wow.
And so...
And so with a town like ours that, are we supposed to size up and go to the encyclopedia and look at everything and then mill it all or are you...
Well, you just ask John.
There you go.
And I go ask the guy at the county.
Okay.
They're actually pretty good.
They're knowledgeable.
Great to work with, I'm just wondering about just identification, I mean, there's a lot of weeds.
That's the hard part.
Yeah.
That's the hard part. You know, we mentioned a few of these and I have actually, we have some of these in our town that wasn't there a couple of years ago, and I've mentioned a couple of those and so we've really got, I don't know, it's huge, but the bigger problem is us identifying as the homeowners identifying all that. I mean, that's huge, you know, we go, we've had some issues around the benefit property and I've had to go up and show them, you know, what they are and tell them how to fight them and what chemical to use and, I mean, everybody's responsible on their own and we've been pretty lax about it. If you have a plan, if you have a weed plan, just you're actively working on that, that's really all we can ask.
So, it's got the weed killer.
As far as the resident, or as far as, when you say that's all we can ask?
Yeah, on some of these constructions, we've gone through that, we make them submit a weed plan. If they're working on it, actively working on it, I mean, you can't, eradication is, that's a long ways away for a lot of these. I mean, they have a five-year seed life in the ground, it's an ongoing thing.
Sprig, that yellow one, that's got five years, that yellow sprig or something like, get the one that was up on that road, you were just talking, that driveway when they brought it in?
Oh, yeah, yes. That's, that one is, if it takes off, we're gonna have problems, I mean, we just got, there's so many, it's hard to say which one is worse.
And they did address that one though, I think, didn't they?
Pretty sure.
Part of it could last year.
Yeah, spurge, yeah, the spurge is up there on that hillside, if it takes off up that hillside, I mean, if you look over in Midway and Spring it here, you'll see yellow flowers. That is the, that is the spurge up that hillside and it just takes over and it could throw a seed 20 feet. So, when that thing pops, it sends the seeds out 20 feet, it will have to be by a waterway or anything else that's going, it's going clear across the valley. Anyway, I don't mean to hammer that, but I want you to be aware of how much that is. They are gonna hold another meeting. The way that this read, they really, they have been reluctant to cross municipal boundaries. With this new document that they have, it looks like that they are not gonna be that scared to cross municipal boundaries.
I assume notification, not necessarily crossing the municipal boundary, but wherever they're going, if it was private land or not, they'd be notifying somebody about that or...
No, they use what's called EdMaps on the web and they'll report where they've been, what they've applied and what's been reported and the homeowner can actually go on there, take a picture of it, it'll download, it's an app, so you'll download your longitude latitude and then they have to come out, when I say they have, Quentin comes out and verifies that that weed is in that spot and then it's marked on the map. So, if you're doing a biological control or whatever you're using on there, it will actually track that so that you can bring that up. Yes, I know what Serbit is doing this on, so it's pretty good, it's pretty good. However, the federal and state, most state and federal will not use that because of the separation between their information that they have.
Does it work?
Yeah.
Does propane work with flame?
It does until the 4th of July and we...
Yeah.
Anyway, I just think you should be aware of that, there's a ton of it going on, that's a huge list, we went, that thing's more than doubled.
That's what I'm wondering, I can't see if you keep the stuff down, spray, vegetation killing or anything else, so I'm thinking...
What really helps is if you take that vegetation killer and you change the mode of action, so one will be the surface and it'll kill it and if you go to one that's stimic, it'll take it down in the roots. So, if you use two modes of action, say Roundup and 248 at the same time, you would get a better kill and a less of a resistance to build up to that, so that's also a big issue is resistance to the herbicides, so. However, they did report at the weed conference that none of these weeds on this list have become immune to the steel shovel.
All right.
There's no resistance.
Oh, they got a couple of pistols that are pretty resistant.
More fire.
They fight back anyway.
Yes.
Yeah. I wonder if we can let you do that, does that work? You have some kind of form to go over it?
Yeah.
And then just on the, the last item on this, we'll be able to move on or maybe there's a few more, but the governor signing the metering of domestic, wouldn't all domestic be metered first of all, or how, what does that mean there? I can understand the second part.
What they have done, and we can actually bring that up in the water if you want, or we can bring it up now, what they've done is, and the governor has signed this into law, all water will be metered, irrigation and culinary, and he will adopt a rate structure that's in conservation. So, the flat fee will no longer be there, the more you use, it will be tiered and the price will go up.
And they're talking...
Is it the state or still...
Irrigation there specifically, or were we talking all water?
All water will have conservation, they're calling it conservation billing.
Including pilot mills?
Well, that's just what the wording they had, so, and the governor has signed that one, so I think it's gonna make it.
Someone just asked.
That'll be June, there's no money appropriated for that, so municipalities and irrigation companies are gonna have to eat the price on that and so I assume that they'll be passing that on to the consumers. I have, I have, I have a ton of questions, you know, I got six-inch lines, you know what your meter is for a six-inch line?
No.
Are they doing, are they doing, you're looking at 1,200 bucks.
But the irrigation, irrigation companies, they were already metered one way or the other.
Yeah, but not a point of delivery though.
Not all irrigation companies and not all culinary water companies are measured, so I've, and I'm still curious, the point of delivery is still, I've asked questions and nobody can answer them.
Yeah, I got a bunch of that down there.
Yeah, so the point of delivery, is the point of delivery into our ponds, the irrigation company's pond, three ponds, and then we disseminate it out to the customers, or is that every individual field that needs to be metered?
Well, but we would be a wholesaler at that point, right, into the pond?
Yeah, so our connection where we feed the pond will be a wholesale connection, which is already metered.
Those are exempt.
Which is already metered.
Doggone it, the only ones exempt that we gotta meter.
But they're already metered as far as...
Well, we need that data anyway.
So, it's a lot more to come on that.
So, is it not clear if the individual will be metered on irrigation or not?
It will, it will, you will be metered.
We guard stuff that's metered, but they have, they are metered.
And see, you don't have the same thing, you got a four-inch line coming down through there.
You're talking all pressurized irrigation system?
All pressure, all water. It's all conservation, that's what's pushing it and so the legislature has taken it out of the different municipalities and irrigation companies' hands and because the state owns the water, they can dictate.
So, they're gonna come down whenever they do and the meter along that whenever they do?
I don't know if, see, last time they topped meters, they just showed up with a notice and said, "You have till now to get a meter or turn your water off." So, that's how it went down last time, so...
So, you'll have to cut your own end basically?
Yeah, that's what they did last time, so...
You mean, I'm ambitious for something, I guess now this has popped up?
Well, I gotta give this so much time, I mean...
Yeah, it will be.
So, we'll work on a couple of plans to figure that out for customers depending on...
Probably be the next irrigation system.
Yeah, I don't know, next...
Anyway, the legislature's done a bunch, has taken a lot of municipal authority away in dictating how that works, so, and they're doing the same thing with the business licenses. I mean, you see that list in the bottom of your planning report?
Yeah.
You see all those? Those are all just water bills.
All these here?
Yes, those are all water bills, those are not the land use bills, there's another list for land use bills.
Wow, that's a solution. Probably have to fill the other hundred pages.
Well, it depends, like the 224 I got, I was telling you Thursday, I got six changes during the day on that bill. So, it goes into committee and they change things and pull in more sponsors and see what they can get more support for it, so that changes and they told us that, I believe, so everything should be grabbing up this week, it'll be busy down there this week, but hey, if you, if you read one and you can see that there's something on there, shoot off the memo, they've been already responsive, so.
So, on Daniel domestic, or on our water company here, we can't keep with our flat rate anymore?
That's correct, they're gonna require us to do a tier grading for conservation.
And the tier, we do have a tier grading now, but it's not in enough tiers to make them happy?
Yeah, well, I'm sure we'll be getting all the rules from the original drinking water on what they wanna see.
No, we're not sure on that, maybe it is...
Yeah, but they're, well, they're talking like the base is small and then it goes up very steep to keep the conservation down, so. I did ask that question, so we can tier that one penny up the line and they said that would qualify under the, under the, under the language that's in the bill right now.
So, are they gonna say that they're coming up with the price for the lot?
They are not gonna do that because they, well, they couldn't do that really because they don't know what it takes us to offer it.
I know, that's, I'm just trying to figure how they're gonna tier this.
They're just hitting the bills on a conservation end of it. It's like everything they do up there, they got half of the problem.
My understanding is our water systems are in compliance, we've metered every connection, we have increasing rate structures where we might take the opportunity to approve it, but I don't think we're in any trouble. From a culinary perspective, I don't think we have a lot to do, to worry about unless you've heard something to the contrary.
Yeah, though that's what they were talking about in the session.
That base rate might come under play, I mean, there's not any towns that have 20,000 gallons of water available.
A few years ago, we had more than that.
Another question I have is, can I shift it over to irrigation? How does that play into your shares and the value of your shares? Let's say that you've got enough water that you can really put twice as much water on your pasture if you want to.
They, that's not a beneficial use and they will be taking that water.
They'll take it, they'll regen...
So, in essence, if you have a whole lot of water shares, and you, let's just, for example, you have 20 shares and that'll take care of five acres. Let's say that you have 30 shares and you're gonna take care of 20 acres, they're gonna come in and take those 10 shares away from you?
Unless you can prove your beneficial use, which it used to be five years, five years to use, 10 years to take, and they changed that this year to legislature to four and seven, so it's shortened that time, in the bill, it hasn't passed yet.
Is Daniel irrigation, the board, the irrigation board, are they aware of this so that they...
I think doubt it.
So that they could let the members know that their shares can possibly disappear or devalue?
All I can tell you is I didn't see them at the classes. If you wanna look that up, Senate Bill 75 is the adjudication bill that's going through right now, so they're working on that one right now, if you wanna look that up, but we knew that was coming when, you know, there's so much development here that they'll do an aerial photo and they will take our shares in this valley and they will adjudicate saying how much is irrigation, how much irrigated acres we have versus...
Eric, because of your job, Tyler, and where you work, you could answer this too.
Me on.
No, we'll keep it private, present. Tell me how all of this moss affects the meters, what comes into your system?
The moss?
The moss.
It'll plug up the screen, most of them have a screen before the impeller, so it'll plug up the screen.
So, what do you recommend, grinder in the front of them?
Well, the good news is that if it's your meter, it will never read more, so you'll get more water than the meter's reading, from the perspective of the water suppliers. If they go to a different meter that doesn't have an impeller, like we have done, that doesn't have anything that restricts that flow, it'll, it's much better.
Is a grinder also another application?
It is, but then you start running into what the C factor and how far upstream you putt that versus what disruptions it has on the meter, it's a lot more technical and it wears out, it's mechanical. So, the meter, the meter technology is way ahead, but they're really fighting the moss pretty heavy now with copper sulfate a lot now in the lines, so I don't know how much moss you're getting down, down those lines, do you think you're getting a lot?
No, no. But you got a filter before the...
Yeah, well, and, and I actually, sorry, I don't, I've been, the litigation for the second phase of the canal linings, so they're working on that right now, the second phase has been completed. So, that meeting is taking place this week on Phase Two, you'll, all down from Center Street all the way down to Mill Road is now all cement, so it's all been lined and that will take care of that section, was probably the worst one in Los Angeles County, because they actually came in and clay lined it to keep it from leaking into the soil, well, they drove the moss really good. So, they've actually used mechanical means in there, just a tracope with sweeps to take it out of there, but a lot, when they're doing that, a lot of that will just stay on the screen and they can take it out as slope screens along the corridors, but that's, I think that's screened twice before it gets into the pond, so before it gets down to your, on that tip line.
And there's a question in the day about the idea of running a new pimp line down our street, have you heard anything about that?
I haven't.
I think that's associated with the development of the school.
Yeah, they were insisting it was irrigation and not, and not culinary, are they running both lines down, so irrigation and culinary?
So, the culinary line we designed and getting reviewed by Kim and Gary in the school district, the irrigation line, I've been in contact with their engineer and it's not so much a new line that they're trying to relocate an existing line and I haven't had the chance to get through the plans to see if he's recommending or requesting that we do that or decide that it's okay where it is.
That's interesting, is that Taylor's all my, all my landscaping out, but I didn't...
It was basically moving, he wanted to, they wanted to move it from inside the property line to help the right-of-way and so I was waiting to see that, which way they went on that and then the town needs to talk about what to do or not do.
If they went with something like that, putting a new line, wouldn't they leave the existing line alone and just put in a new line and then reconnect it?
No, so the reason they're moving this one is it's in the way, so they would be putting in a new one and tearing the old one out.
That's gonna cost me a shitload of money or something, 'cause that's, that's really a problem, 'cause they're talking about doing it on the, on the west side of the road, that, right?
Yes, so, no, the culinary is on the west side, so it would be, sorry, yes, the east side, so it would be the west side of the irrigation line would go down, unless they ran it just down their property and then back out in the field, which is an option too, I don't know what...
When you say their property, you're talking about the school?
The school's property, they may, they could relocate it into the right-of-way just for their school lots and back out in the field. I haven't read the, I haven't got through the plans yet, so, can we report back soon as I do?
We have four property owners here tonight, it's on Ranch Drive.
Yeah.
Are you guys in favor of the culinary water line?
Yeah, I've got no problem with that. We all have wells though, we all have wells.
Yeah, I'm not gonna walk in, but...
If it's gonna be much money, bring money to our town, sure, I mean, it's going in, but...
We all have wells, but I talked to Robert Armstrong, to drill my well today would be $56,000, 'cause it's steel and PVC lined and these guys are gonna be building the house, that's...
I got a bet of 40.
Did you?
Still a lot.
How deep are they calling that?
I don't, I don't remember at all.
Whatever it is, go deeper.
Well, if it, if it, they're pulling a line, I'm sure around the bend of the connection.
You probably shouldn't tell us that.
It's all one.
How much it costs to drill a well.
I got a bet of 40.
We have, we have to set an impact fee here.
I've already heard what the impact fees are, you can't change this for me. I've sat in these meetings to hear the impact fees.
One motion away.
One thing speaking of, as we're talking about this, what about with the water, the school district passing shares back to us for their water that are gonna be connected? I mean, you know, we passed some time ago, they need to turn shares in when they connect under the water at, you know, for that property, that still's gonna have to happen, isn't it?
I don't think...
I've gotta review their letter.
Yep.
I think, I think they wanted to do it, I think they wanted to do it all with cash and then in kind, but I'll have to review the letter, I don't really answer that.
It's hitting me right now, so I've been sort of trying not to...
'Cause I think there was 18 shares attached to each of those lots originally, if they didn't purchase any or sell any, each of those lots when they were originally developed came with 18 shares of water.
Okay. Any other discussion with regards to planning department report code violations and enforcement? We're on number three.
Not for me, I thought you was asking them.
No, I just, I didn't, okay, now, per former recommendation from planning commission with supporting documents on the Smith lot line adjustment.
I believe we have folks here for that to audit.
Okay.
Do we, is anybody here with a Smith?
Yeah, my name's Dick Frost, representing Jerry Smith.
If you would mind coming up?
No.
Would you state your name for the record please?
No, why are you cutting this?
My name's Nick Frost, I'm representing Jerry Smith in this matter. We've gone over it pretty comprehensively with the planning commission, I don't know how much you guys know or don't know, I'm certainly willing to answer any questions you might have in regard to the lot line adjustment we're proposing.
Show it up on the board. I was kinda going, do you have a presentation work for us or something, or do you wanna have us ask you questions after we've discussed it?
Yeah, how about, how about we do this, I'll just give you a quick rundown of what we're doing, the cursory one, and then we can, we can kinda take it from there, okay? So, when this matters, kinda get a little bit of background, when this matter was first brought to my attention, it was in the realm of, I'm a land use attorney, and it was brought to me, us in the realm of trying to avoid litigation and I'll explain why, I don't know how much of a factually you guys know, but I think we've done a really good job. So, this parcel right here, I'm just gonna refer to it as the access parcel, and then this is kind of the larger parcel. These were deeded together on the same deed in 1998 in one warranty deed. The idea of this parcel was to access this parcel and at the time, in the deed, it was conveyed, it was 100 feet across the frontage road on 3,000 South, that was the amount that was actually conveyed in the warranty deed. Four days later, after it was conveyed, after the Smiths purchased it, a plat was recorded that was generated by the previous owner, the person who sold the Smiths the property, that took this 100 feet, went all the way across, took it down and made it 70 feet, thus rendering this useless to access this parcel. So, when it was recorded, she wasn't the owner of the record, this is why it was presumptively going to be litigation, it has, I should put the earmarkings of fraud. When I got involved, it was to avoid the litigation because it'll get pretty messy as you guys know, and to try to find an amicable solution. So, what we've done is, the guy that owns this parcel right here now, so this is now 70 feet across, the guy that owns this parcel right here, his name's Rick McKeon, he's a really nice guy, I met with him, called him on the phone, we got together, I explained the situation and I said, "Look, we need to use this to access this parcel, this is a total long shot, but by any chance would you be willing to convey over an additional 30 feet of your property right here?"
It's a nice piano, huh?
Yeah, he's great. Is there another one here?
I'm not sure if it's working, but...
For the moment, so you give me this 30 feet here and we'll go back five feet, so we have a total of 100 feet of frontage and in exchange, we'll give you another, since we own this parcel, we'll give you a foot that goes all the way back along the whole length of your lot. So, essentially it increases his lot by a little bit and then it also gives us this 100 feet, really nice guy.
Does he still have 100?
What's that?
Does he still have 100, at least 100?
Oh, yeah, he has more than 100, so he...
How many acres is involved in this lot?
This one's .46 as it currently stands. This one's non-conforming, do you remember exactly what this was?
About an acre and a half, 1.2?
Yeah, somewhere in that, and then this is 9. something back here, what was saying, 9, 9...
Close enough for two houses anyway.
Well, back here, there's enough for just a one house, but you need to be five acres of this.
I mean, between the two, the front lot and the back lot.
Well, this one you can't, this one you can't build on, it's restricted, just to access this one.
Right, but I mean, by using that, you've got, what, 14 acres or 13 acres?
You got nine and a half.
Now, you got nine plus the fourth, plus the .46.
No, oh, okay, gotcha.
Sorry, that's probably the heart of the Penn's fault here.
All right.
Maybe this one's gonna be a shame.
So, we're just trying, it's access to one lot, so there's no subdivision.
Okay.
It's just, it's just a lot line adjustment to take a non-conforming lot with 1.2 acres and make it 1.20001.
And he's in the...
And with the frontage is a...
Other landlord is willing to give up that 30 feet, put them with that up?
Yeah, yeah, really nice guy.
Sounds like a good solution.
And I think, you know, in the alternative being that, you know, and I don't do litigation, but I know it works, that everybody gets sued and it takes years and tons of money, you know, he was aware of that and, you know, he's a nice guy. This was really one of those scenarios where everyone just got together, talked it out and it was a very brief meeting and everyone was on the same page. We're, I worked really closely with Ryan, he's gone over the code, I feel it's a very favorable solution, solves the problem.
So, just gives them 100 feet of frontage?
Correct.
And this is a way, kind of around with, with still keeping the 100 feet to access, basically it's a driveway.
And so the non-conforming lot still has more than 100 feet, it got bigger, not smaller, albeit not significantly, but we didn't make a non-conforming lot smaller and so I think it meets...
I, I think it flies right in the face of the 100-foot frontage. It, the idea is not to buy five feet deep and get another 30 feet and I got 100 feet of frontage, that's not the idea of the code, all right? So, I don't think it's a good solution. I don't know that there is a good solution and maybe this is the best solution, but I wouldn't call it a good solution. You kinda look at it as...
Planning and zoning is recommended that this...
They recommend it, I know, I've read the, I've read the letter.
But this scenario, I'm clear.
I've read the letter and everything else, it's probably the best solution, but it's not a good solution, in my opinion. And since we're talking about that, we have a, now that he's shown the five, that little chunk that you, you wanna discuss, there's a well that services the existing house already on the new parcel that, that was not necessarily thoroughly, thoroughly discussed in planning before, so this came up after the recommendation, as far as the well being in that little section that they peeled off.
Where, where did the well, where was it?
Actually, water meter. Excuse me, meter, I'm down.
My understanding from what he says is the water meter's located right here?
That's right, I meant, I said well, but I didn't...
Oh, okay, is that, is that accurate? That's the first time that this has come to my attention.
Yeah.
Is that a problem?
Yeah, so I, sorry, I talked last week, I haven't had a chance to talk to you about it, but one of the concerns that's come up between the last meeting and now is that But one of the concerns that's come up between the last meeting and now is that the water meter's located in that area for that lot. So, how we want, do we wanna recommend that be relocated, or I think there's, I think there's a number of solutions.
I, I think that that would be the most expensive solution. We, we've run into this matter a lot in my career. Usually we'll just grant some sort of right of way, use that over it.
This is kinda going out on a limb, but that's kinda crazy. It, it's like a double flag lot. Couldn't you just treat it as a flag lot?
We don't allow flag...
I know, we're gonna talk about it, it might, it might be legally or shortly.
And that is another option maybe. And so, but the problem, and I think the reason, because I agree with John, it's not necess, you know, it may be the best solution here, but it... Making irregularly shaped lots is problematic sometimes, but our code doesn't speak to that right now.
And we're dealing with two, well, at least one irregular, uh, lot as far as, uh, uh, the acreage. The other one, there's enough acreage, but there's not enough...
Frontage.
Frontage for, the road frontage for that. Because the only other way is to take thirty feet, that whole section, and then do that other. And I think that would be a lot more disruptive in, uh, what's going on there. I know that's, I can say, there's not a great solution here. Is that, but if that's the, the, the best idea and the least invasive to both parties, and they're, both parties are willing to, uh, do that. You know, I can see that being at least a, one way that if somebody had, if we run into the situacation, situation again, it gives them some kind of vehicle to go around. The other is to put a road in, like the other, the private road, to go back and then, and then do it that way, which is a much bigger expanse and...
Have you seen this?
I'm not sure that...
The driveway part of it.
Our code on flag lots?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Our proposed, the proposed?
No, that, that's the existing code?
Eight twenty-seven, as it relates to subdivisions.
Subdivision, I, I, I'm not sure, is that, is that what that is?
Is that eight twenty-seven?
Eight twenty-seven.
Yeah, that's related to, eight twenty-seven relates to subdivision.
It, it seems like they could do what they wanna do without that. With that?
No, that's within a subdivision, that's how eight twenty-seven is within a subdivision.
That's a, that's a flag lot within a subdivision?
Right.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's a code of the realm.
Sorry, it gets complicated up there.
We've, we've looked at it, we've looked at a lot of it, Rob, you know. I think the rarity of this situation is based on, on years of doing this, is you have two neighbors that got together and shook a hand without a problem.
Would like to work, it was something they wanna encourage, I think, uh, versus, uh, hating each other after years of litigation.
We felt like in terms of irregular lots, and there's some pretty funky lots already, but, but this was probably the least invasive in terms of switching boundary lines around. Very nominal changes.
Do we, do we see anything, uh...
Well, right here on the, as far as agenda, there's a recommendation from planning commission, supporting documents for the Smiths. So they, they've recommended to us, we don't necessarily have to vote on it tonight. I think there are some questions with regards to relocation of that meter and how that's gonna get handled since it's on a separate property. But, um, you know, I, I, I don't know, uh, I feel comfortable recommending something while we haven't, uh, we've got another issue to solve.
I, I don't see the big problem with the meter.
No, no.
It may or may not depend on them, and Kim, Kim has an input on it. Is that the thing to go to these people and say, hey, are you worried about this meter?